We want to really tailor the code to the specific neighborhoods of the city. The needs in South Hills are very different than the needs in downtown and they're very different than the needs in the south side. So we want to really make sure that the code reflects the community of West Covina and we don't get a code that the consultant did in their last city. So it is a very long timeframe, plus the environmental review process. But if all goes well, we should have a code adopted within two to two and a half years.
And this encompasses the entire city?
That is correct.
Because there's been talk, you know, about that we just had a general plan update and people don't remember or realize that was a limited focus, general plan update.
Correct. It was mostly focused on the downtown.
It did not touch a lot of the city.
That is correct.
It's a specific, limited area.
Yes.
People are kind of wondering, why are we doing it again? Well, we're not.
We're not. This is, as you say, covers the entire community, north, south, east and west.
Very good. We're looking forward to it.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
City's budget is of close, of course, tightly balanced this year and given the reductions in the revenue, we're watching it quite closely. But we're being very aggressive about pursuing whatever grants we might be able to garner because for sure someone's going to get those grants and it might as well be us. I'd like to again thank publicly our staff for their good work on helping us get this one. It was a good effort.
Wonderful. Thank you. But I have another question before you leave though. I understand that a couple of years back, we did read the rezoning or the code got changed a little bit and I think we probably spent about $500,000 or so, I believe, what, half a million dollar on getting the rezoning and I believe it may have been, just encompasses less than 5% of the land use in West Covina. Predominantly, we were concentrating just downtown area. So you're saying this particular grant that we're getting, we're going to try to go, besides the downtown focus, we're focusing on the entire West Covina area?
That is correct, yes.
So residential area.
You could think of your planning documents in terms of layers. The general plan is at the highest level. What areas are generally painted yellow for single family? What areas are painted red for commercial, et cetera? That most recent planning effort you're referring to focused almost exclusively on the downtown area. This is the next layer down, which is the zoning ordinance. It's the bread and butter of every one of your meetings. What are the setbacks? What are the height requirements? What are the spacing needs of development when they're dividing or subdividing land, et cetera? And so it's the nuts and bolts of the city's regulatory process and that's really the essence of every one of your meetings and we want to make sure that it reflects the standards that the community commission and council desires.
Wonderful. And also since we have a lot of new commissioners here as too, I'm trying to see if we perhaps, since we are encompassing and rezoning our land use in West Covina, perhaps you can send some of our new commissioners or all the commissioners to their planning meeting that they have annually with the fund that we perhaps.
I will do my best. It certainly, the League of California Cities does excellent work. The motto of the league is California cities work together and the Planning Commissioners Institute is well worth your time and the city's money. So if we are able to make that possible in the next fiscal year, we'll, we're going to try. I'm a supporter, I'm a believer and I want you to be current in every respect and be able to network with your colleagues statewide.
Thank you. Wonderful. Congratulations.
We should, Madam Chair, we should note that Commissioner Hockes has arrived at 7:24, I believe he walked in. So we are fully staffed or fully commissioned.
Wonderful. Hi there. Okay, I guess we have a, is there any other oral communications here? Anyone? Email? Phone calls? Okay, so public hearing? None? We have no public hearing on the agenda tonight, so we will proceed with non-hearing items. So the non-hearing items, we will have two. Number one, we have a small collection recycling facility annual report and the last one would be the study session for design guideline for wireless telecommunication facility in the public right of way. So the second item, even though we don't have a public hearing, it's important because it encompass all the land use actually in the entire West Covina. So hopefully everyone participate with this. It affects everyone's home.
Talking about the recycling?
The second item, which is the study sessions, even though we don't have a public hearing, but we still have a study sessions that affects the city's, entire city's. Study session for design guideline for wireless telecommunication facility in the public right of way. So that's.
That's after this.
After the first one. Correct. Thank you. The non-hearing items, who will be presenting this item? Joanne?
I will be presenting the item. Commission, sorry, Chair, Chair Hing. Item number two is small collection recycling facility annual report. The annual report started in 2017 when the planning commission requested that the city should review the co-compliance of recycling centers. At the time, the city was having problems with the operation of several recycling centers within the city and this was due to property maintenance and also noise impacts to surrounding Currently, the municipal code requirements are for small recycling centers are, the maximum allowed is 500 square feet in size. They have to be set back at least 50 feet from the right of lane. They have to be at least 250 feet from residential uses, but those 250 feet may be reduced to 150 feet if it's separated by arterial street from a residential use. They may only be located on properties with a market greater than 25,000 square feet and they may also take up five parking spaces within the center. Currently, the city only has one recycling, a small recycling facility and it's located on 1314 West Francis Kito Road. The recycling center is called Sunset Recycling Center. It's on, it's within the North Gate Market parking lot on Sunset Avenue in Francis Kito. The recycling center is a buyback type recycling center where they purchase bottles, cans, basically CRV containers from people that are bringing them to the recycling center. This particular small recycling center is 320 square feet in size and it was approved on July 19, 2016 through an AUP process that was, that actually went to the planning commission and got appealed to the city council. So it was actually approved by the city council. Staff visited the site a number of times, once during the time they're closed and another time during the time they were open and operating. And a photograph of the site is on the slide and it is, the site is well maintained. Staff did not observe any trash or debris around the area during the site visits and staff also, staff also checked with code enforcement to see if there has been any open code enforcement cases in relation to the recycling facility and was told by the code enforcement manager that they do not have any code enforcement cases pertaining to this particular recycling facility. Since, so staff has reported, has received only positive feedback and reports regarding this particular recycling facility and given that this is the only recycling facility in the city, staff would like to ask the commission if, if the commission desires to continue the annual reporting and also as a recommendation, staff is just recommending to receive the report and file.
Anyone?
I have a question. So, okay, so right now we have an annual review process. So you want to not have that anymore?
I'm sorry, if I may. The, we do have an annual review process that was requested by the planning commission in 2017 and at that time, the city had about four to five recycling centers. Now we're only down to one. And some of those recycling centers in the past were right adjacent to residential properties. And this particular one that we've had, we've never had, we've never had any problems with and they continue renewing and they keep up with their business license and there's no history of code enforcement cases on this particular one. If the planning commission would like to continue the annual report, staff is willing to do so. It was just a question that's raised.
Otherwise, it would just be complaint driven?
It would just be, it would just be complaint driven or if, if we do have more recycling facilities that are open, that are, that open up in the future, the planning commission may ask to bring it back again.
I actually like to keep the meeting. Maybe that will keep them, you know, clean up the facilities and make sure everything is done correctly. I understand that this is the only one currently that West Covina have. Hopefully we get more, but I think we should continue. It's really quick and if there's no problem, we can just, you know, move on very quickly. So, well, before we do that, we need to open the floors to, for public comments.
I have another question.
I have another question too.
Okay. We only have one in our city limits. Is that something that needs to be rectified by, is it state driven or is the city have to make sure we have enough? That's a state program though, right?
That was my question.
Great minds think a lot.
There are state laws regarding the CRV containers, but there are, there are CRV recycling facilities that are similar to this outside of the city limits that, that serve a portion of the city and there are also certain stores that, that are capable of taking in the CRV recycling bottles and cans.
So there's no, there's no violation or anything like that that we're?
There is, but none, I believe none of our stores are in violation.
Okay.
Because the other facilities around the area are taking care of them.
I have a question that maybe you can answer it for me. I thought you had to have recycling center every, in a two mile diameter by state law. Can you confirm that? Because if we only have the one on Francis Kito Sunset, you know, it's eight miles to where like Herb lives. So over there, Nogales Temple, you know, Nogales Valley, you know, in that general area. I'm just curious, because that's what I was led to believe. I don't know. Do you, do you have an answer for that?
That was the case at one point, but I can verify if that is still the case now. In addition to the recycling, requiring the recycling facilities on site, the state also allows individual stores to take, the option of taking in the recyclables.
And it doesn't help that the biggest recycler in the country went belly up. Thank you.
Besides recycling, I think our current trash, don't they recycle as well? I mean, not that, if you take the, to the recycling facility, I think you get paid.
Unlike some cities, Athens, we don't have a separate recycling bin with Athens.
No.
We have green waste and trash.
Correct.
If I may answer that as well. The city contracts with Athens and Athens brings all their trash to the materials recovery facility and so their, their recyclables are picked out.
Yeah, the big difference is if we take it, you know, depending how much you have, you know, you get, you know, $10, $11 bucks and walk out.
You get your money back.
Get your money back personally.
All right. Well, if there's any other questions?
Just make a, oh, Dawn has a question.
I just want to let you know, last, last Friday, I went over and sat there in the parking lot and just observed the facility and they're living up to everything they said they would do. There's, there's no trash around. It's not that noisy. Several customers came up to the place and it was really fast in and out and so I don't see a problem with it at all. They're living up to what they said they would do.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I was kind of gonna echo that. You know, I have, I went there a couple of times after he opened up because I had concerns because, you know, you and I went on this commission when we had a big issue with one of these small recycling facilities. It had, it was appealed and, I mean revoked and all that. It was a mess. So I was very concerned when we, when we, you know, had this new one coming in front of us and that's one of the reasons why we put in the, the review process. But I went out there a couple of times and I've actually been there several times to do my recycling and I agree with Commissioner Holtz. They are doing a terrific job there. It is very, open or closed, it's a clean facility. It's well done and when I go up there, the guy comes right over, you know, he knows I'm 100 years old and he, you know, he says, you know, can I help you with that? You know, what do you need to do? And, you know, they help you with it. You know, they don't stand around and watch you struggle, you know? They help you with it and they're extremely nice and, you know, I have no problem with it. You know, since talking about whether we need to have a review or not, we only have the one recycling center in the city and, you know, if we get, you know, another one or a couple of more, I can understand, you know, that would have to come to us and we at that point could implement a review process for those new ones or even all of them again. We can accomplish that, but the fact is, we only have the one and the guy is doing a great job and, you know, I think at this point, we don't need to, you know, I mean, I realize it's only once a year, but still, you know, I don't know that we need to encumber staff with another, with this review at this point every year. I think if we wait, I think if it's complaint driven, we get complaints, it can be investigated and so forth, but they've been there now for a while and no issues, not a complaint, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong. I believe it's been a pretty complaint-free business, which I like. So I'm perfectly, from my seat, I'm perfectly fine in, in not having annual review until it's necessary by, you know, changing circumstances.
I agree with Commissioner Redholtz. If we have some complaints, then we can change and make some other accommodations and all that, but we haven't had any complaints, so I think staff's got enough to do right now. So if we have some complaints, we can look at it again, but as long as we don't have any complaints, I just think we ought to just leave it go as is. No, no reviews.
Okay, so we opened the floor. Does anyone have any more questions, fellow commissioners? So we opened the floors to public for comments. Any emails? Any phone calls? Publix are not here. So I guess I'll, in public comment? And anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
I will make a motion that we remove the review component and then receive and file after that or is that how you do it? Okay. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Call for motion?
It's made, we have a.
I'm sorry. Okay, Mark, could you?
Yes, we have a motion by Commissioner Redholtz, second by Commissioner Holtz to remove the annual review and receive and file. I will take a roll call. Vice Chair Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
And Chair Hing?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
And, okay, so we're moving on to study sessions for, which is item number three. Study sessions for design guidelines for wireless telecommunication facilities in the public right of way. And who will be doing these presentations? Before you start the presentation, I think, Joanne, will you be doing the presentation or Mark? Okay. Before we start this conversations, I'd like to address the residents or the Publix at home or also our public commissioners. This, basically this public right of way and study, it affects 17 square mile, I think believe the city has of land use and it also affect every single residential's home and commercial properties. This will be put in front of their homes or properties. So I'd like to see, before we study and address the, our Publix, who will be, most of them due to the COVID, probably be watching from home or later review the, the site. So go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hing. This, the last study, the last study session regarding the design guidelines for small wireless facilities in the public right of way was held by the planning commission on July 28, 2020. And to review the discussion, the planning commission discussion, the items that were discussed were number one, format. The planning commission, there was a consensus with the planning commission that stated that the commission desires a simple and straightforward format and the commission desires a hierarchy of preferences included in the guidelines. This was similar to what we currently have in combination with what Costa Mesa had as far as examples that were provided at that time. And as far as content is concerned, the planning commission wanted facilities and support equipment to be, to replace existing aggregate poles. The poles would be made out of aggregate. The replacement cannot be more than three, three feet from the existing and the color and shapes would have to match the existing pole. This is similar to what we currently have. As far as vertical alignment is concerned, the, the equipment and antennas would have to be shrouded and the diameter of the shroud is at a one-to-one ratio in relation to the pole. The commission did not want the RRU, which is the remote radio unit, radio, I'm sorry, radio remote unit box attached to the side of the pole. And as far as antenna and RRU is concerned, it should be within the shroud above the pole. The wires and cables are to be within, installed within the pole itself or if the wires and cables cannot be installed within the pole, it would be installed within a conduit to match the pole. And the planning commission did not want any above ground equipment. So all equipment would be, would have to be undergrounded in order for, in order for wireless telecommunication facilities in the public right of way to be approved administratively by staff. As far as the support structure hierarchy, I'm going to go ahead and go over the hierarchy by topic and then if the planning commission has comments, go ahead and feel free to interrupt. Also add, add your thoughts as well. As far as the support structure hierarchy is concerned, we have, our preference would be, it be placed on existing or replacement light standards first and then new light standards, existing replacement city traffic light poles or existing or replacement utility poles and then new poles and standalone poles and then other, other poles would be last. How does the planning commission feel about this hierarchy listed?
I'm fine with it.
No one has any more?
I don't have any concerns with it as written.
Okay. Thank you. And then the location hierarchy is separated by non-residential and residential zones. The first location hierarchy is, I believe the planning commission prefers it to be located on, or considered to be located on non-residential zones first. And the way, the way it's formatted would be, it would be within or adjacent to existing industrial zones in areas not adjacent to residential uses would be first considered, followed by within or adjacent to commercial zones. In areas not, not adjacent to residential uses, on principal arterial streets, minor arterial streets or collector streets, within or adjacent to the industrial zone and adjacent to multifamily residential uses, within or adjacent to commercial zones and adjacent to multifamily residential uses, I think, commercial zones and adjacent to multifamily residential uses. And then third or next would be within or adjacent to industrial zone and adjacent to single family residential uses and then followed by, lastly for non-residential uses is within or adjacent to commercial zones and adjacent to single family residential uses or a daycare primary school or secondary school. How does the planning commission feel about this hierarchy for non-residential zones and also if the planning commission wants to add another, any, any item that is not listed here in the hierarchy?
Well, Madam Chair, speaking from my seat, we, you know, we've gone over, we've gone through this, this is what we, the hierarchy we decided at the last meeting and we're just kind of, you know, giving it the stamp of approval, I guess is what we're doing tonight with this. And, you know, what I see in front of me, I, I think we've covered it and I think we've, we've, you know, got it the way we want it to be. I don't see any, any change right now from my seat.
Does any other commissioners have any changes or to what Joanne has listed?
No, I think it's good as it stands as written. I'm good with it too.
Good with it? Okay.
Okay, for, for non, for residential zones, the, the, the order is similar to the non-residential zones, which adjacent to multifamily with, adjacent to multifamily zone on principal arterial streets being first, firstly considered and then last would be within or adjacent to single family zones or schools. Does the planning commission, would the planning commissioners like to add anything to this particular list or is the planning commission okay with this particular list?
Anyone has any comments or want to add on to?
I'm, I'm okay with this. You know, if, if I just may say, last time we dealt with this, we had on the phone a representative from Crown Castle, I think it was, and, you know, that lady was very amenable to, to what we were discussing, including, you know, the, the undergrounding of the equipment, which was a big issue. So, I mean, she was amenable to all of that and that's why we have got what's in front of us tonight. I mean, she's, you know, she was good with it and I think the commission was good with it, so.
Yeah. It's wonderful that she was really working with the city, but also at the same time, we learned quite a bit from her as well because it's really, it's up to the residents and also the commissioners to decide, because this is a study. Because this is a study, study sessions, which affect all the residents in West Covina. You and I are here today, but tomorrow we may not be here. However, when this code and the study sections will affect us, whether we're not, we're here or not here. For example, I was just realizing, that I was just looking around for the last few weeks, saying, you know, how many pole, how many light pole do I have surrounding my property? And I didn't even know until a couple of weeks ago that I have total seven. So if I'm not here, and the code is written a certain way, I can literally have seven items on those poles surrounding the property. So, which is wonderful that we are having these discussions, and it's affecting everyone's house. And I don't know how many people realize how many light pole or telephone poles are surrounding the property. So it's important, this is a study sessions. It may, it may not affect us today. But it doesn't only affect us as planning commissioners, which each commissioners practically command over, probably like, what? We have 30,000 residents, and I don't know how many commercial properties. So each of us can potentially hold, you know, 20,000, 20,000 property, or so. So 10,000 home that we're affecting, whatever decisions that we're making tonight. So that's why we're doing the study sessions. And we're just going over some of the items, or we're just going over what we had discussed the last time. And then see what will fit. Because wants to prove that's basically what the code's going to be. So thank you for all the discussions. And thank you, Joanne, go ahead.
You're welcome. This just brings forward the recommendation. Our recommendation is for the planning commission to accept the report and provide further direction to staff. If there is no further direction, staff will come back with the draft of the design guidelines for a planning commission consideration. And if the planning commission is okay with the draft, after, after the meeting, the staff will schedule the guidelines to be reviewed by the city council as well.
Okay, so we're going to open this to commission discussions, and then we're going to open up to public hearing. Then in public hearing, then we'll call for motion. So I guess right now, we're going to be having commission discussions regarding these items and also the reports. I don't know how many pages the reports are, kind of, quite thick, so. You're asking us to approve for the report. So does anyone have anything regarding the reports that we have in front of us?
Madam Chair, I am prepared to make a motion to receive and file the report. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. I think we spent more than enough time on this item and just beat it to death in every way, fashion and form. And so I don't know what else we can do to change it, to make it any better at this time.
Okay, before we file and submit the report, could we have at least an open to the public for comments? Does?
Manager to comment on it, or?
Okay, Joanne, do we have?
We have a motion in a second on the floor.
Okay, so I just wanted to open to public meeting. And right now, we don't have anyone in the public. I don't know if the video can zoom in, say, there's only one person here, a city manager. And also, I don't know if we have any phone calls or any emails.
We have not.
Regarding this?
We have not received any comments.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so we open for discussions? There's a motion already? Anyone wants to have a discussion?
Roll call.
Okay, all right.
Roll call, please.
Do a roll call?
Yes, thank you. So we have.
Actually, hold on, before I go, I like, I like, I have some questions. Joanne, on this particular report, I'm looking at the report right now, because you're asking us to submit the report, or at least go through what you have. At the, I'm not sure what page it is. It's the City of West Covina Small Wireless Facility Design Guidelines in the public right-of-way. On this particular page on the guideline, do you, will this be submitted to the city as well? City man, I'm sorry, city council?
Well, Chair, for me, that's, that's our existing design guidelines. I attached it for reference. We will prepare new guidelines, but the existing one will be included as an attachment to the report when it goes to the planning commission at the, at the next, at the meeting, when we will schedule the design guidelines to be reviewed by the planning commission. And then it'll also be, once the planning commission recommends approval of the design guidelines to the city council, we will include that as an attachment as well as, and as well as the draft design guidelines that the planning commission reviewed.
Okay, so currently, we're going to talk about the design guideline on the next study sessions.
It will not be a study session. It would be, it would be an agendized item for discussion.
Okay, all right. It will be a public hearing, okay. Okay, then, we'll just take roll call.
Yes, so we have, just to reiterate, a motion by Commissioner Redholtz, seconded by Commissioner Holtz. I'll take a roll call. So Vice Chair Holtz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes.
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Aye.
Commissioner Redholtz.
Aye.
And Chair Hing.
Before I take the vote, I'd like to say that, you know, I'm very uncomfortable giving this vote, because I believe that we should have a public discussion over how we should handle all the situations in affecting all the land uses in the city of West Covina. There's a total of over 30,000 homes and lots of commercials. And this will affect the property, how it looks, and we should at least have a discussions about it. So I would be voting no. Thank you.
The motion passes on a four-to-one vote.
So we move on to commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Would any of the commissioners like to make a comment or report?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that it's nice to be back in the, in the council chambers. You know, it feels good. It brings back a sense of normalcy. I hope we can continue to make the progress in dealing with the COVID-19. And, you know, it's looking, you know, we can't get our hopes up, but it's looking, it's looking better. So, but, you know, I think it's much better all the way around for the city council and the planning commission to do the public's business in the council chamber. You know, it's just, it's just, it's just a better process, it's more open. And it just, it feels better. And I hope that we can continue to, to go forward and continue to meet here. And hopefully, people will feel comfortable again about coming in, you know, to the chamber for council meetings and commission meetings. So, you know, looking forward to that. Thank you.
Yes, I have a comment. Or, actually, it's a bit of also a question for, for staff regarding the news. I just heard about city getting a $500,000 LEAP grant, which I guess will be used to rewrite new codes for land use planning. And I guess this is an effort that hasn't had an opportunity, the city hasn't had an opportunity to do in quite a number of years. So I was wondering, will it be a good time to get a, just sort of a preview report of what will? Oh, I'm so sorry, that's my fault for, my fault for being late. Okay, well, that's good to know. Then we will be hearing about it fairly soon in the next, more about it in the next meeting, then.
I'm happy to hear your process.
Yeah.
If I may, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hockes, I can certainly give you an update after the meeting.
I'm glad to hear it, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, community development directors report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners. We originally were planning on having our first meeting in September. We believe that the development agreement for Plaza West Covina would be ready to move forward. We had a call with the development team on Monday and found out that the project was not ready yet to move forward. So the commission won't be meeting on September 8. And we'll be bringing forward the development agreement at, at a future date, but we don't know what that is. So we would anticipate canceling the September 8 meeting. The other item that was scheduled for that meeting, the tentative tract map, Joanne reached out to the applicant, and he was amenable to moving that to September 22. So the next meeting of the commission would be on Wednesday, excuse me, Tuesday, September 22.
Okay, and so far, excuse me, there's just the one item on that?
At this point, I believe, yes, correct?
Okay, so no meeting on the 8th and a meeting on the 22nd?
That is correct, yes. And that concludes my report.
Okay, so we have city council actions. Mark will also report, any city council actions? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank my fellow commissioners and especially Mark for keeping me posted during my time when I've been laid up and keeping me up to date on things that have been going on, and I appreciate that. And I'm glad that I'm back, and hopefully I can stay. So, thank you to all of you.
Yes, personally, it's very, very good to see you, Commissioner. In terms of city council updates, Dave's already talked about the two grant items. The council does have on their agenda next Tuesday night a request to initiate a code amendment regarding potential sale of beer and wine in conjunction with gas stations. And if that item does get initiated by the council, we anticipate that the planning commission shortly thereafter will be having a public hearing to revisit that matter.
So that would not be on the 8th?
It would not be, because it would need to be a noticed public hearing. And we don't know what action the council's going to yet take on the 1st. So we'll wait to be given that direction and then proceed according to that.
Is there any background as to why this is being initiated again?
All I.
Settled matter.
All I can say is that I think the council, or the commissioners are aware of the mother may I process the council has established. And Councilmember Johnson requested that the item be brought forth. And I believe he had at least two other affirmative votes for the item to be reconsidered. And under the council's process, the free item, three votes, just like with the commission, sets a process in motion. It doesn't presuppose anything, it just sets a process in motion. So Councilmember Johnson asked for that, and that's where we are tonight. We'll have more direction on Tuesday.
Okay, if we don't, since there's no further business to consider, this meeting is adjourned? Do we have any other? No? So we adjourn?
I guess so. 8:05.
8:05, okay, thank you, everyone.